Welcome to City Hall. We'll get started this morning with our invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I'll also draw attention to the family of Willard Jenkins. Willard Jenkins was on about a long time ago from the City firefighters. One of the first original 12 black firefighters, he passed away recently at the age of 92. So we remember his family. As we gather for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, our pastor this morning, as I look for my notes, is Steve Dieh. He's the senior minister at Coyle Springs Church of Christ. Steve, thank you for coming down. And afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Meg Sayer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a beautiful, cool morning. We thank you for the opportunity to be in this city and with these people and in fellowship with you. Pray your blessing upon Oklahoma City and the surrounding community. We pray that you bless our leaders, those who are representing us here this morning. Protect their families. Bless them as they serve, as they connect with their constituents, Lord, as they make decisions for this great city. We thank you for the diversity that we experience in this great city and pray that you would bless us and bind us together as a people with our diversity being one of our greatest blessings. Again, we thank you for this day and ask you to be present here. And I pray this prayer to you in the name of the one who represents us in heaven, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a couple of resolutions this morning. Our first is the opportunity to commend Dakota Jane Hill on her selection as being the teacher of the month. This presentation is made on behalf of the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and also the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Let's show our appreciation to Jane. Thank you so much. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Well, as Dakota Jane Hill has been named teacher of the month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for November 2010. And whereas Dakota Jane Hill teaches 4th grade at North Highland Math and Science Academy. And whereas Dakota Jane Hill has been honored as the North Highland Math and Science Academy 2009 to 2010 Building Teacher of the Year and was honored as a finalist for the Oklahoma City Public Schools 2010-11 District Teacher of the Year. Whereas Dakota Jane Hill serves as the lead technology educator, gifted and talent coordinator, social studies curriculum leader, and on the school leadership team at North Highland Math and Science Academy. Whereas Dakota Jane Hill says her students have taught her the importance of individualized instruction, continuous learning, and flexibility. Whereas Dakota Jane Hill's goal is to develop students with unshakable foundation skills who can recognize and effectively use their strengths, use strategies enabling rapid improvement or compensation based on their weaknesses, and have an ability to overcome obstacles so that they can ultimately succeed in any endeavor. Whereas Dakota Jane Hill is described as an exceptional educator who demonstrates unwavering passion, serves as a great role model and mentor, and demonstrates a strong commitment to her students and to the profession. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Dakota Jane Hill on her selection as the November 2010 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
How about a motion? All right, now this is where the excitement comes in. We have to see if this passes or not. Turn around. And it passes unanimously. All right, let's show our appreciation.
I would like to thank so much the colleagues that I work with, my students who I work with every day, you, you, Mayor, and the foundation, everyone who's recognized me for this. Every day I work with people who are very hard in Oklahoma City Public Schools, and I am so thankful for the people I work with, and I thank God for this opportunity.
We appreciate you very much. All right, now let's have up the Rockets from Mount St. Mary's. They're the 3A class softball champions. Come on forward, girls. And Bill Reynolds?
I'll join him.
Bring up everybody. Anybody that's here to support the girls. We have a resolution. Let's go ahead and start reading it, and we'll get settled up here.
Whereas the Mount St. Mary Rockets won the Class 3A State Softball Championship on October 9th, 2010 with a 5-1 victory over the Washington Warriors. And whereas the Rockets and Coach Darryl Reynolds were in action at ASA Hall of Fame just one day earlier in the semifinal against Sequoia Taliaqua, advancing to the championship game by a score of 2-1. And whereas this was the first championship series for the Rockets softball program, and winning the title has forever set a place in school history for the 2009-2010 team. Whereas the Rockets ended their season with a 31-6 record with five of their losses coming against teams from Class 4A and above. Whereas Coach Reynolds and the players, many of whom have been playing together for several years, are very proud of their team's performance in bringing the championship trophy to Mount St. Mary's. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend and congratulate the Mount St. Mary Rockets on winning the Class 3A State Softball Championship.
Now, let's see if we can get a resolution passed to honor the Rockets of Mount St. Mary's. Who would like to make the motion? All right, have a second. Pass your votes. And it passes unanimously. Let's show our appreciation for the state champions. Okay, Amanda, and your last name?
Muscle Hots.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You know, it's been a blessing to be on this team. We had an awesome season. We did really well. The team was truly blessed with ability and, you know, the passion to do an awesome season. Anyways, we just want to say thank you to you, Mayor, for being an awesome leader for Oklahoma City. And there's a lot of leaders even on this team, so thank you.
Congratulations. And I know you're the only senior, so it's expected that Mount St. Mary's is going to have a good team next year without you. Okay. Congratulations again. Each quarter, we ask Roy Williams of the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce to come by and give us an update on chamber activities, and Roy's here this morning.
Morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, thank you again for asking me back. I look forward to these and appreciate the opportunity to share some good things about our community as well as some information kind of about what's going on. There are several areas I want to discuss this morning, and while they're kind of random, they do kind of all tie together, so I'll just begin. One is some economic development information. All of you are aware of what's taking place with Boeing and what's going on. You've heard a lot of information about that. And just to kind of update you, they are currently in the process of making offers to employees that they want to see move here, that they want to relocate here. They're actually also starting to post Oklahoma City positions on their website, which is boeing.com/careers, as these positions get defined and as offers go out. As you all know, we conducted a relocation event in Long Beach. About 45 people went with us out there to talk to Boeing employees and to share with them information about our community. And we're going to continue to work with Boeing on more opportunities. And I know some of you have probably heard from media reports and based on comments by Steve Hendrickson from Boeing that there are a lot of other projects under consideration. We continue to work with them on that, and we hope after the first of the year, we'll be able to make some pretty positive announcements about additional Boeing opportunities in Oklahoma City. Another area is our Batel study. If you all will remember, about five years ago, we hired Batel to come in and to set a course for bioscience initiatives here locally. Since that time, we've had tremendous success on that initiative that they directed us to do. We've seen the launch of Oklahoma Bio, which is our statewide bio association. We've seen the Oklahoma Seed Fund come about. We've seen the Oklahoma Life Science Fund occur. So we've seen very significant investments in the bioscience industry locally. And in fact, employment in the non-hospital bio jobs is up nearly 18%, which is outpacing the national rate. And this update that we have now engaged Batel in will set the course for future investments and give us an idea of what our advocacy and programming should be for the next five years. So we're excited about that initiative. We recently published our annual business retention and expansion survey. We surveyed over this last year 282 different companies in the metropolitan area. Just a capsule of that because we have the entire document published, and be happy to share it with you, but just some highlights of that. Thirty-four percent of these companies told us that they had specific expansion plans, both in terms of capital investment as well as employment. That's a good number, but it's down about 7% from a year ago. And keep in mind, this is a window of the entire last 12 months, so some of these surveys were done nearly a year ago. So we saw kind of expansion slowing a little bit, but the other side of that coin is that 80% of the companies reported an increase in sales from the same time a year ago. They also told us that the strengths remain are relative to low costs and relative to value received for those costs. They also point out the good quality of life, the positive business climate, and strong community leadership. The barriers that they cited remain the ones we continually see, and that's lacking skilled labor in key sectors, educational attainment not being at the levels they'd like to see them, lack of quality available sites or facilities, low venture capital availability, and still limited nonstop flights. So again, there's a whole lot more information in this report. We'd be glad to provide one to you. On economic development, our forward Oklahoma City program is in place. And just as a reminder, this is our five-year economic development program. We've completed three of these the last 15 years. We're currently raising funds for the next five years, which will be 211 through 2015. We're currently at a little over $16.5 million in that effort. We're already up 1.2 million over our previous five-year amount. This shows to us a very incredible commitment from the business community about economic development. We're planning to complete this campaign in the first 90 days of 2011, and we're confident we're going to reach our goal of 17.5 million for the next five-year period. In the area of image and awareness, part of what we continually do is benchmark against peers in all of our program areas. And we recently completed an image study that took a snapshot three years ago versus today, and that was to evaluate the image of our market here in central Oklahoma relative to our competitors. There were three targeted audiences that we wanted to look at to see where we were in their minds. One was corporate site location consultants. The other were CEOs and other executive officers in companies, basically Fortune 1000 companies, and then corporate employees of those companies as well. What we found is that with the site location consultants, we have had a profound improvement in their minds. In fact, we have leapfrogged every one of our peers, and we are virtually at the top of the list on corporate site location consultants. We're not that way with CEOs and the executive offices. Part of the reason, though, is because our marketing strategy over the years has been directed towards site location consultants. So we have moved that needle exactly what we wanted to do. Now we're focusing on the corporate executive officers and beginning to mount campaigns toward them. The same is true with corporate employees. We moved the needle on them toward their image about us, but not very significant because, again, that was not a targeted audience for us. But we'll use this information to study and to continue to refine our messaging as we look for other ways to sort of overcome these kind of negative perceptions that we continue to have. Things that help us is like the recent ranking by Forbes that named Oklahoma City the most affordable city in America. This is a great designation because they looked at both the combination of cost and the quality of the job market. So again, more recognition, more recognition, and a lot more progress being made. As most of you are aware, we were fairly busy recently with several conferences that continue to showcase our community in a positive light. One conference that we've been working on is the National SBIR Conference, which is an innovation and research conference, and that is to help companies access national research funding and also to put local companies in contact with other decision-makers. You also are aware that the community recently hosted the World Creativity Forum. That continues to attract international attention to Oklahoma City. And the worldwide launch of Entrepreneurship Week also happened at that conference, so we're still getting a rebound from the positive press that came out of that. I also want to thank those of you who participated in either our intra-city visit or our retreat that we recently had. Our goal was to put these two events together so we could leverage off of the other. We examined progress of downtown development. We discussed education, retail development, regionalism, river development during our intercity visit. And then we went into more detail and discussion during our retreat about education, about legislative activity, about the city's plan OKC process and more. Just as an information point, we have set our legislative priorities for 2011, which includes a joint agenda with Tulsa. And in fact, at Rotary in a couple hours, Mike Neal, my peer in Tulsa, president of the chamber there, he and I will be presenting our joint agenda to the Oklahoma City Rotary Club. And I'll be happy to discuss that in more detail perhaps at the next time when I come here because there's still obviously a lot of things that will happen before the legislature even meets. We also are continuing our evaluation of Oklahoma City's competitive position as it relates to pre-K through 20 education. We recently took a small delegation to Louisville, Kentucky, and looked at some national programs as well as what Louisville is doing in their reform model. And as you would guess, education is becoming a very high priority, not only of the chamber but of the community as a whole. And we look forward to working with the city, with the community, and with other business, both public and private sector leaders, as we move forward in tackling education. Final thing I want to mention is just to remind you that on Monday, December the 13th, we're having our annual meeting, the changing of the gavel of our chairman of the board, and certainly invite you to attend that. We'll be at the clock center at 6:00 PM. So with that, Mayor, I'm through, and would be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Congratulations on the success with the site selectors and leapfrogging all those peer cities. That's wonderful news. And that's obviously reflected in some of the job growth that you all have helped create. Questions for Roy? All right, Roy, thanks for coming.
Mayor, I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
The Councilman Mars and the mayor and I formed the city's legislative committee, and we set the legislative agenda, which is later approved by the council. I would like to see us look at this year and in following years to try to work together with the chamber. Maybe have somebody from the council sit in when your legislative agenda is set and have somebody from the chamber sit in when ours is set. There's, I just believe there would be a synergy there that we might both profit by.
Actually, in some of our areas, that already occurs, like in, we have a transportation committee that looks at it, and obviously ODOT, ACOG, the city are all engaged, but we can.
I don't think they're done in a vacuum now, so don't misunderstand. I don't think they're done without, either. But I just think that if, the possibility that you could send a representative from the chamber when we have our legislative meeting and perhaps the same when you have yours, there could be some things gained by that. I think things come up on our agenda that perhaps the business community might not be aware of, but they would certainly be impactful to the business community, so just a thought.
We'd be glad to do that. Just let us know whenever your process internally begins.
The mayor chairs the committee, so.
We'll be happy to reciprocate as well. That's a very good point.
Roy, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, item four of the council agenda, this is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 23rd, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 16th. Do you have a motion? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, item five, this is request for uncontested continuances.
And this morning, Mr. Mayor?
Any requests for uncontested continuances from the council? All right, onto the consent docket.
[inaudible].
All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations? I know we have a presentation from staff and perhaps some discussion after that on item 6F. Couple of, well, it looks like three people have signed up to speak. Are they all on that issue? Okay, three people have signed up to speak on item 6F. We'll probably get started with the council presentation, but is there any other council items of note on the consent docket? All right. AJ, you want to get us started?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the council for this opportunity to speak on the engineer's report. Marcus Johnson is handing out the presentation here. AJ Kirkpatrick from the Planning Department, and I am the staff for the Downtown Business Improvement District. I was asked to come and give you a short presentation on the engineer's report that covers the second generation downtown bid. Just as a reminder, the original downtown bid was created in 2001, and it was created for a period of 10 years. So we've known that this day was coming for quite a while, and we started about two years ago. Okay, thanks, Marcus. So we began in September of 2008 on a business plan and a strategic plan for downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated, and that was directed by council as part of a joint partnership with downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated. Throughout the next 16 months, Puma returned to the city several times, worked with several stakeholder groups to craft what would become the final bid plan that was presented and approved by the downtown bid board on January 20th, 2010. Throughout 2010, city staff also worked to, worked with the state legislature to change the state statutes on bids. We made three significant changes, so I want to thank the city manager's office for the support on that as well. And then in May of 2010, downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated started their petition drive. The state senate passed our legislative changes on May 21st, and then on October 12th, the city council approved the final six months of service for the original downtown bid, with that to be terminated on March 31st of 2011. DOKC returned in November 4th, 2010 with their petition packet. That petition packet at the time contained support from 47.1% of the properties in downtown, and then if the city were to include its property, which is an additional 16.7%, that would be a total percentage of support of 63.7%. And as far as I know, DOKC is still out actively trying to get additional petitions in support of the district as we move through this process. And then the final step, of course, was that council, just a couple of weeks ago, requested the engineer's report, and we are returning today with that engineer's report. So through Puma's work with the downtown stakeholders and downtown bid board, they came up with several priorities. I won't read them all to you, but they wanted to be responsive to the rate payers. They wanted to meet all the needs of the district and to use bid funds to leverage additional funds. In that renewal plan that they presented in January, they had several objectives. Main thing was they wanted to get a private sector champion for downtown. They wanted to unify downtown interests. And an important point that I want to make on that last bullet, they were doing most of their work in 2009, which was a scary economic time for a lot of people. Throughout that whole process, the downtown stakeholders viewed the downtown bid as an important thing. They viewed it as one of the most important engines of downtown reinvestment, and they were supportive of it. So in the bid work plan, just some of the highlights, they want to continue the core services of the bid. So in general, you're going to see a lot of the same services in this new second generation bid as you did in the first one. They wanted to add new community development services, allow flexibility to add services throughout the course. One of the major things we saw coming down the pipeline was the Project 180 streetscapes as well as some geo-bond funded streetscapes. We wanted to make sure that we had the flexibility to maintain those streetscapes once they were installed. We knew that the Devon Development was going to have a significant impact on the structure of the bid, wanted to make sure that Bricktown met some of their growing needs, and that we realized that throughout the life of the first bid, we had significant residential increases, and we wanted to consider that in the second generation bid. In terms of localized amenity, oh, I'm sorry, in terms of the work plan, they wanted to continue localized amenity maintenance and marketing. So you're going to see enhanced sidewalk sweeping and landscape maintenance, continued underground and Bricktown canal maintenance and security. And then in certain areas where there was strong nonprofits that were open to all rate payers, they asked for additional levels of service in Bricktown Auto Alley and the Film Exchange District. So I'm going to ask you to view the bid in terms of a three-layer cake. So there are three tiers. Service Zone 1, everybody pays into. Does things like downtown wide marketing, image and appearance enhancements, advocacy, community development and management. The second tier, not everybody pays into this, only those that wanted street level maintenance or where there was a significant streetscape going in, they will be paying for street level maintenance. And the service Zone 3, the third tier, that covers services such as underground canal, the underground and Bricktown canal security maintenance, and then also the sub-district specific services I mentioned earlier. To give you some idea of how that geography works, that's a little washed out up here, but I think it's better on your handouts. Basically, everybody is in the pink area, which is considered Tier 1 or Service Zone 1, and that's the district-wide services. Then a smaller group is in the red area, which is considered Zone 2, that provides street level maintenance. And then only in the areas that benefit from the canal and from the underground or concourse tunnel system pay into Zone 3 for amenity maintenance. In addition to that, there's the yellow, purple, and green dotted lines to show the One of the issues that we found when we were working with stakeholders is that in the original bid, there was one shared pot for street level maintenance, and that created a situation in which some parts of the entire district were supporting street level maintenance and other parts. Some of the parts of the bid, including Auto Blue Alley and Bricktown, were concerned about Project 180 maintenance costs, driving up their street level maintenance costs. So we agreed to split that Service Zone 2 up into smaller pools of assessment. So basically, if the red area is its own pool, the green area is its own pool, yellow, blue, and purple, those will all be done on a separate contract, and their assessment variable will be determined by that contract and their street frontage alone. The first-year bid budget, the Service Level 1 is looking at a budget of $695,000 plus $50,000 for a total of $745,000. Again, that's the Again, that's the tier that everybody pays into. Service Level 2, the five different street-level pools combined to $252,000, and Service Level 3, which includes all of the maintenance, security, and the sub-district-specific districts, are $150,000 for underground maintenance, $92,000 for Bricktown canal maintenance, $130 for Bricktown services improvements, and then $40,000 for Auto Alley services improvements, for a total proposed budget of $1.4 million. This would be a good point to remind you that the bid is based on three main variables: assessed value as determined by the county, the linear street frontage of the properties. So if you have a property that's on a corner that's 140 feet deep and has a 50-foot frontage, you're paying both for the 140 that's on the side street and the 50s for a total of 190 feet. And then the third variable is amenity frontage. So those properties, for instance, that have direct canal frontage, they pay for, if they have 50 feet on the canal, they pay for 50 feet of the canal in that pot. This is just, this just gives you a sense of how those numbers play out. In the district-wide, you'll be paying .0074 times your net assessed, and you'll be paying 1.12 times your linear street frontage. And then as you work your way down, Service Zone 2, the street-level maintenance, since that is so dependent on street level and your share of the street, you pay exclusively on per foot of lot frontage. And then as you get down into the Service Zone 3, that's a mix of amenity frontage and street frontage. In these Auto Alley and Bricktown zones, Auto Alley kept their historic assessment methodology, which is based on assessed value, .0114 times their assessed value. And then Bricktown Marketing, this is the first time they'll be doing this, they chose to split theirs between assessed value and street frontage. Just to give you a sense, because assessed value does not change, the lot frontage and amenity frontage does stay pretty stable throughout each year. Assessed value changes each year, and so we wanted to give you a sense of what's happened to assessed value throughout the life of the original bid. So in 2000, we were looking at about $41 million in total net assessed. Throughout the course of that bid, we've seen that almost double to $80 million in the course of 10 years. I want to make a slight caveat about that final year, 2009. We actually saw the pool of net assessed decline a little bit because we made the decision to pull the condos out and assess them in a different manner, so they're not reflected in that number. Then also, the county started assessing the Skirvin, the building, the Skirvin as personal property, and the property underneath it is real property, so that about $4.5 million came out of the pool. DOKC is having conversations with the Skirvin about addressing that. If you were to include those properties back in, you'd be looking at about $80 million. The engineer's report has several assessment adjustments that I'd bring to your attention. We addressed this during the renewal of the year 10 in the first generation bid, but just to remind you, all the residential condos will be charged the equivalent of around $72.50 if they're in Service Zone 1, and if they're in an area that's receiving street-level, they'll probably pay about additional $20, $23. Councilman Kelly asked me at that last presentation how much they were generating, and I went back and looked. We have 281 units that are paying the $72.50, and that's going to raise about $21,000. And then the, we have 89 properties that are in the Service Zone 2, and they'd be paying about $1,900 into street-level maintenance. We are going to include a taxable market value that's capped at $100 million per property that was fought for, advocated quite a bit by our consultants, PUMA. They'd seen that done in other cities, and they felt like it was a smart thing for us to do. The bid board is going to try to do, has recommended that they will try to cap their budget growth by 5% each year. I want to point out, when you look back at that assessed value growth over the course of the bid, or the life of the bid, that assessed value was growing anywhere from 7% to 12% in any given year, so 5% is pretty conservative. However, we also do understand that the new Project 180 streetscapes could drive up those costs as they come online, and they're going to come online in great numbers. There was concern amongst ratepayers that we put some sort of cap in so that they would not be handed a massive amount in maintenance costs each year, so the plan and the engineer's report put a cap that we would not raise street-level maintenance more than $4 than what was identified as the $1.92 in the original bid plan. So that would be a total of $5.92 as a cap. Go ahead. In terms of bid governance, we feel like we have a good relationship with Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated. They also went through a strategic, excuse me, a strategic planning process while we were doing the creation of the bid plan, so we see continued day-to-day management by DOKC. Feel like they're in good position to leverage other funds. In terms of the bid advisory board, it is an advisory board, but we would like to see an owner-occupied resident added to that board because we are assessing them now, and then also we would like to see the Film District added as a representative to the bid. In terms of moving forward, our, these are tentative council dates, of course, anything can change these, but right now, the resolution before you would set the public hearing for December 21st, and after that public hearing, you'd have a resolution before you that would create the district. On January 18th, I was planning on coming back with a resolution proposing the assessment role and setting the date of the second public hearing, and then we would introduce the ordinance. February 8th, you, the OCPPA would approve the professional services agreement, there'd be a resolution confirming the assessment role, and then there'd be an ordinance on final hearing. And then finally, March 31st, original downtown business improvement district would terminate, so we would not have a bid at that point, and our goal was to create this new second-generation bid the day after April 1st to run for the first half-year service till September 31st. That's something I want to point out, you approved six months of service out of the old bid, and the plan was to do six months of service out of the new bid so that DOKC could continue to renew on its October 1, its typical October 1 start date. So with that, I will turn to questions. I just want to make the point here today that the resolution before you does not ask you to make any judgments on the creation of the district, the assessment methodology, or the services that are being provided. It simply asks you to set the public hearing for December 21st. And with that, I also have Dan Brummett from the municipal council's office here, and Jane Jenkins from Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated, if you have any additional questions.
I do have a question or two, AJ. Could we go back to that last slide on the December 21st that kind of gave us the timeline?
Mm-hmm.
It says first public hearing, and it also says resolution creates the district. Why would the first public hearing and the creation of the district be on the same date?
You handle that, Dan.
The statute requires that the council adopt a resolution setting the public hearing, and then the public hearing has to be between 10 and 30 days after that. It's a statutory requirement.
So they're not happening simultaneously?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, is the public hearing, it says public hearing on creation of the district, and then a resolution creating the district. It sounds like we're having the first opportunity for the public to be informed about it, and we're creating it at the exact same time.
Right, as a result of the public hearing, then the council will adopt the resolution creating the district.
Okay, so we'll have the public hearing, and then presumably, the council would then vote to create the district?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just to get everybody up to date, this is really showing, I think, the growth of the bid process. This is not an extension, this is a brand-new bid. We've been in, for 10 years now, we've been working on the previous bid that has done wonders for downtown and street maintenance and the look of downtown, and really, I think, helped organize our downtown businesses and residents. And now we're saying, where are we now, where are we going forward? And I think this compilation, largely by city staff and the business owners, is kind of the second generation of the downtown bid process. This is a very big step, and we do need some input from council and also the property owners that I hope we hear from today about how they view what has been proposed, because these are significant steps going forward. Any comments from council before we hear from the people who have signed up to speak?
Mayor, I'd just like to follow your line of thinking. Dan, if the public hearing was held, and there was, say, whoever was there didn't want the bid to be created, and we needed more time to talk about or discuss it, we would not have to pass the resolution that day.
No, sir, you can continue the meeting, continue the hearing to a subsequent meeting if you needed more time.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of a technical question, AJ. The budget that you presented at roughly $1,004,000, that's a 12-month budget, not a 6-month budget?
Yes, thank you for pointing that out, I didn't make that clear. That is, that is a hypothetical full year of assessment. We'd only be asking for a half that amount in this for six months.
Okay, thank you.
Skip.
I was just a little confused as, when you stated that the, with the new improvements of Project 180, and that the potential of increasing the cost of the members of the bid, what did you cap it off at?
They wrote in the bid plan as no more than an additional $4 of street-level maintenance, and the amount that they were starting from was $1.92, so I would interpret that to mean that we would not go above $5.92.
For the, for the next six months?
For the life of the bid.
The life of the bid.
For a year.
And the challenge that we're obviously facing is with 180 not complete, we don't know what those maintenance costs are going to be, so this was essentially your best guess estimate.
Yeah, they had the very same problem when they started the first bid and not knowing until the canal was fully completed what the maintenance costs would be. We've had several conversations with the consultants and with downtown property owners, you know, trying to get a sense of what that maintenance would be, but at this point, we're still making educated guesses.
Okay. Any other comments from council before we hear from people? All right, Richard Dowell. AJ, thank you. We'll ask everyone who comes up to give us their name and address for the record and to keep their comments as brief as possible. Morning, Rick.
Okay, good morning. I am here today representing the newly-formed Park Plaza District. I don't know if you're aware of this, in your, in item 6, I think it is, it shows, it lists our district as one of the things that supposedly you're voting on. However, in this engineering report, this is a detail I've recently become aware of, it doesn't put forward to you exactly what districts they will be or what their borders will be. Now, back on January the 10th, or whenever the bid meeting was, there was a vote made by the bid board that delineated what districts there would be, what their borders would be. And based on that, I and others in the area called the Park Plaza District, and since I don't have anything, a slide to show you, I'll just pass this around. This was a newly, supposedly newly-created district in the downtown area. Now, what I've noticed in the 10 years that our company has been a ratepayer to the Business Improvement District is that those property owners that are part of an organized association generally get a lot better treatment and attention than those that aren't. When the bid was originally set up, there was a large area called the Arts District that incorporated what is now going to be about three districts, and we didn't have any organization. And it takes an organization to share the workload so that ratepayers know what's going on. So, for example, they're aware of a meeting we're having today, and they have people show up that are informed, they can prepare slides to make their case to you. For example, if you look back there, you'll see all of those people that are all together are representing areas that do have organized associations. And so here I am by myself, because I didn't even know that this meeting had the potential to drastically change what we thought was in concrete a year ago. Otherwise, I'd have a lot of people here. Now, I want to say this, that what we found out, much to our dismay, at the last Business Improvement District meeting, is that there were forces out there that wanted to eliminate the Park Plaza District in its entirety. That, when I reported back to our property owners, who, by the way, we now have 73% of the property owners in what would be the Park Plaza District, that want, A, there to be a Park Plaza District, B, agree with the borders decided on by the bid board back in January, and they were just absolutely in a total state of condemnation at the thought that this district would be eliminated. Now, what brought this on was a Board of Adjustment hearing that was trying to amend, in fact, which did amend the Project 180 plan as it affected the Park Plaza District. And in our view, the things that we had asked for, and in fact, which we got from the Board of Adjustment, were fairly trivial, and I thought quite reasonable. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to just show you, I mean, a picture's worth a thousand words, and I'm sorry I didn't realize this was going to be such an important meeting, or I would have prepared something a little better. But let me just show you right now what is at issue and what brought about the problem I think the area, one reason that we formed this district is all of us property owners in the area noticed that the buildings, both the ones that were in the private sector and the ones that were nonprofits, in other words, they were churches, were buildings that were over 100 years old, in some cases are, you know, 80 or 90 years old. And the common element, that's the common element they had. Another thing that we all had in common is that we were the bombing area that was covered by the government program to rebuild the area. The area around the bombing memorial was, if you will recall, those of you where they were around in 1995, was virtually obliterated. The businesses were basically destroyed. Our company helped move the journal record into a 20-story building within about six months after the bombing. Within about three or four years after the bombing, our company started acquiring probably most of the, I'd say, east, western third of this area, of which there was not one single business in operation. There were 13 acres of vacant buildings, there was nothing there but derelicts. So, and on the other parts of the district, we've had people that have built buildings from scratch, whose businesses were destroyed and have stayed. Many of them left. So there's a lot that the memorial and our district has in common, and I have never seen such enthusiasm. One of the mistakes that I made early on, just kind of going along as a property owner, is there was a "me" instead of a "we," and I found, much to my surprise, that when I started talking to business owners in the area that had similar problems to what I had, there was just a tremendous outpouring of desire to participate. And it was amazing that we were able to get 73% of the property owners by area to sign up for the district and belong to the district. Now, there are two major property owners in the area that had not even signed the bid agreement. That is the Regency Tower, which our new owners have only owned the building for about a year, and the Farmers and Ranchers Insurance Company, which is a major property owner in the area, and their building, as you may be aware, is for sale, and I guess their interest in what happens here is minimal at the moment. If you were to take them out, in other words, they have not even signed the bid agreement, and you were to look at those parties that have actually signed the bid agreement, we're at 95% belong to our association. So the thought, that when we've got 95% of the property owners in that area that you see, they're called the Park Plaza District, that want that district, and that you, the council, or that bid board would even consider, at this late date, a year after that decision was made, abolishing that district for the trivial reading reason, that we may not be really happy with the light fixtures that the original Project 180 was going to put in the area, to me, just seems beyond the pale. If I've got any, now, the reason I'm here right now is my understanding, and again, I'm having to learn very quickly, the machinations of city government, because since we're just getting our board started, we're trying to get people educated so they can share this responsibility. As I understand it, the way this will work, if you approve this engineering report, in essence, you will be delegating the authority to the business, to the Downtown Oklahoma City, which after all is an unelected contractor. The people on the bid board, including myself, were not appointed by you, were not elected by anybody, will be able to make that decision as to whether or not we have a district and what its borders are. And what I'm asking you is I'd rather have you make that decision, because you guys are elected, you represent the people. Downtown OKC is a contractor. I'm here for any questions you might have, and I would be more than glad if you were to postpone this vote. and I would be more than glad if you were to postpone this vote until the next meeting to bring much more detail and have some people show up to testify.
Chuck Wiggins.
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. I'm Chuck Wiggins. And during the period from 2008 to 2010, I served as President of the Bid Advisory Board through most of the process of evaluation and consensus building that A.J. has described to you for renewing the bid for an additional 10-year term. I was involved in the original creation of the bid and have served on the Bid Advisory Board from the beginning nearly 10 years ago. Although the bid has enjoyed extraordinary success and nearly universal support from its ratepayers, wiser voices than mine recommended that before extending its term, we carry out a comprehensive reevaluation of its mission, boundaries, assessment methods, and other issues to ensure that it would continue to be relevant and effective for the next 10 years. With the assistance of Progressive Urban Management out of Denver, we conducted a top-to-bottom review of the bid, soliciting input from ratepayers, business owners, residents of downtown, and stakeholders both inside and outside the existing bid boundaries. What we learned surprised me. Although the bid was working well, we heard lots of constructive ideas about ways to improve it. For two years, we listened, discussed, and adjusted our thinking to design a new bid that would enjoy a consensus of support by its ratepayers and stakeholders for the next 10 years. The new bid will have greater flexibility than the expiring bid, giving it the ability to adapt to the growth of downtown and the future needs of its constituents. I think that's part of what you see in the discussion that Rick just presented to you. There will be changes that this bid will undergo, and this new bid is designed to enable adjustments to take place as we go. The resolution on your document today is the result of this effort. It will extend and modify the existing bid in ways that will improve it, in ways that have been thoroughly discussed and are recommended by the unanimous vote of the Bid Advisory Board. I strongly urge your affirmative vote on this resolution. Thank you.
Chuck, thank you. Ava Scaramucci.
Good morning to all of you. I come here this morning as certainly a member of the Bid Advisory Board, and I currently serve as President of that board. I think what my message would be is that this has been a process. I was thinking back, I think it was the Budget Committee, I volunteered early on to serve, thinking that we would work through this whole process rather quickly. And that committee and the efforts of so many has been ongoing for two-plus years. There has been many opportunities for input. There has been discussions time and time again. Brad Siegel, who was a consultant to help us with this new bid planning, commented in the beginning that he felt like that our bid was absolutely the most complicated of any of the bids that he had been involved with. And certainly, at the end of his tenure, he said for sure that our bid was the most complicated he had ever worked with. But what has been is due process. We have gone through this time and time and time again. The Bid Board is a, it's a great representation of property owners, of stakeholders, of people interested in the downtown community. And we are a board that meets regularly. We understand the significance of all of us working together for the good of the whole. I don't know that we could ever get a document, I don't know that there could ever be a document anywhere that could be agreed upon 100% by 100% of the people. But what I do think is that there has been so much due process. I have read through this engineer's report. It was important to me. Many of us have read through this report. There are a few things that perhaps we would like to change, but they're not significant because we understand the need to move forward, to go ahead and renew a bid. We have had the advantage of 10 years of learning. I wish that we knew everything we needed to know to do the next 10 years. But we do know a lot more than we did before. And I think we have the knowledge to know that this needs to be somewhat flexible, which it is, to accommodate growing needs. And, you know, the good news is that we're all working on something that is for growing needs. And I think it's time to move forward. You know, there are so many people involved this time that are such believers in this process that, in addition to just the bid dollars that are, if you will, required on this bid, that property owners have stepped up to the plate and said, "We want to self-assess additional monies to put into this bid, to do over and beyond even the amenities that the bid would offer, that it does offer." So, people believe in this. This meeting today was a surprise to all of us. Nobody's really had time to prepare. But what I will tell you, is just speaking from two years of working on this, that I think it is a great representation of progress, of moving forward. It allows, for the next 10 years, some tremendous opportunities for all of the downtown areas. And that's what the bid is about. It's about the growth of our downtown Oklahoma City. Anybody like to ask any questions?
Ava, thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I've had the opportunity to sit across the negotiation table from Ms. Scaramucci, and she is very zealous in representing the best interests of her district. There's no doubt about that.
Well, and Jim, I think, to your point, I think this board is very zealous and has always been so, as long as I've been involved, in representing their communities.
All right.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Yes.
What is the, what's the surprise? You made the statement that no one was prepared in...
Well, I just don't think that we realized, I should speak for myself. I didn't realize that there would be any issues with us this morning at all. I thought we had covered and recovered and covered again. And so, in that regard, it was a surprise.
Okay.
Uh-huh. Anything else?
Well, I just have a question for Public City Manager. We're just setting the hearing today.
We're approving the engineer's report. Anticipate the hearing.
So, will there be notice given to everybody of a public meeting? Is that...
Dan, help me out on the notice requirement.
Because I know that the gentleman that spoke before also said that he was caught off guard a little bit. I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking something.
I think some people may have understood, thinking if this was the hearing on the creation of the district, it's just setting the public hearing for December 21st. This is not the hearing where the district will be created.
Okay. Well, it just seemed like there was a couple of times where it would appear to the public possibly that we were doing something where, you know, maybe we weren't letting everybody know. I just want to make sure that we are on top of, making sure everybody knows it has an opportunity to speak.
I think there'll be plenty of opportunity to speak when it comes on for the hearing on the creation of the district.
Thanks.
Yes, and to your point, Brian, I think that we just thought today was just a part of due process of approving that engineer's report.
I think the surprise was is that my office, I'm with the OKC, received a message yesterday morning that there would be people here at the meeting this morning to oppose or to withdraw their support for the Business Improvement District. We had anticipated that this would be just the first step of the process and moving it through the process. And so, indeed, the people that are here speaking in support were not asked until yesterday to come show their support for the bid because we did not know until yesterday that there was going to be opposition. Thanks.
In reference to the engineer's report, is it, I mean, can we assume, or is it factual, that everybody that is part of or will be affected by the bid has been fully advised and given a copy of the engineer's report?
I believe that would be correct. Yes, Skip. When we've had ample opportunity to review it.
The Bid Board... Let me clarify. The Puma presented what was considered the bid plan. And DOKC went out of their way to make sure that as many property owners as possible received the petition and were given access to that bid plan. There is a slight modification from the bid plan to the engineer's report that staff created, but we tried to keep as much of the information in the bid plan as possible.
What's the modification? Did you go over that with us?
The modification between the bid plan and the engineer's report, I think it's just more like it's a level of detail issue. The bid plan is much more detailed than the engineer's report. And when we write the engineer's report, because we heard so strongly from ratepayers that they wanted additional flexibility, we tried to write that engineer's report with that in mind, defining the services minimally, but then also saying what else we thought those pots of money could be used for in the long run. That had been one of the continuing frustrations throughout the first bid is the engineer's report in the first bid had been written so conservatively that we were constantly finding it hard to respond to ratepayers' concerns. And a lot of ratepayers feel like the bid is there too, to be able to move quicker than city government.
I think...
And I'll let Jane speak to that, too.
Again, I think that we viewed this meeting today and your consideration of the engineer's report as the first step of a public process. And that your approval in moving this forward then takes it into the public arena that we will be able to reach out to a wider net of folks. The Bid Board has all received copies of the engineer's report. They all are representative of folks in the district. And once this starts the process of moving forward, we will do further reach out to other specific districts in the community about the specifics of the engineer's report. But until we have a document that council has seen and blessed, we wanted to make sure that you were on board with it, then we will take it to the public, gather their input, and then that's what those subsequent public hearings are for, are for them to come before you and voice any concerns or support that they might have for the report. So, this is really step one in the public process.
All right. Do you want to say something, Meg?
I just was going to make a comment because I do think it's fairly important. There are, I think a distinction needs to be made between what the engineer's report creates, which is basically an assessment district, and what I think Mr. Dowell was talking about with his Park Plaza District and what many of these other folks represent, which are essentially character districts. And they really are two different things. One is a marketing tool, a designation of a sense of place, and the other is really how we pay for it. And so, today, we're just in this process of talking about what the assessment district looks like, not boundaries and divisions on who's in what character district.
Okay. Steve Mason.
Good morning. My name is Steve Mason. I'm also on the Bid Advisory Committee. I'm also a property owner of about 11 buildings at the corner of Ninth and Broadway, the most famous being the Iguana Mexican Grill. I appreciate this bid district. I think it's been, I think the 10-year history of it's been wonderful. Thanks for creating it 10 years ago. It's allowed us to do things that would have been hard to do otherwise, areas of marketing, canal maintenance, and the underground. I think as we go forward, it's very important because it's the best mechanism to maintain Project 180. So, it's a very important thing. I want to respond kind of briefly to what Rick was speaking about. And Councilwoman Salier's right. I think what's before you all in the engineer's report is kind of how do we assess? A.J. was speaking of the levels of service. I think Rick was speaking to the character districts. Bricktown's a character district. Automobile Alley's a character district. And Rick mentioned that this current dialogue about character districts was some sort of response to his comments about streetlights. That's not true. The current discussion of that area is, you know, is how do we work with the Oklahoma City Memorial and the buildings around it? And I don't know where that discussion will go, but it has nothing to do with streetlights. I think character districts are a good topic left at the governance level of the bid. You know, we meet frequently, and that's what we focus on. And I think, you know, Rick's suggestion's going to be that the character districts needs to remain at the council level. I think as proposed in the engineer's report, it is a governance issue at the bid level. I would encourage you today to proceed, setting an agenda for this to be heard in a few weeks as a public hearing, and allow the process to continue. There's been a lot of input to continue, and as we saw on the schedule, there's a lot more input planned. So, I would encourage you to vote today to set a hearing. Thank you.
Steve. Miki Klag.
As Miki's coming up, I just want to reiterate what Steve's saying. We understand that there are still some concerns about how those character districts are defined. Our attempt was to remove that from this conversation. And as Steve said, to have that decided on the Bid Board level, and that would give us additional time to speak to the new property owners that Rick is meeting with. But you could approve this public hearing without any impact on that, on that character district conversation.
All right.
Miki Klag, 1225 North Broadway. I am on the Bid Advisory Board. I'm also on the Automobile Alley Board. I'm the President of the Midtown Redevelopment Board, and also the President of Midtown Redevelopment, or Midtown Renaissance, which is, I'm partners with Bob Howard and Chris Fleming. We own 20 property, or 30 properties, 20 buildings along 10th Street. Two of them are in Automobile Alley at Northwest 10th. We also own, we're partners with the Hall Brothers in the downtown Ford dealership. So, we're significant property owners. I've been involved in the bid process from the beginning. I've had individual meetings with the consultant, worked closely with Jane Jenkins and Chuck Wiggins. And I don't want to take up a lot of everybody's valuable time today, but just to say, I agree with everything Chuck said and Ava said. I agree with the staff's recommendation, and I think we should move forward. I don't think there's any reason for any delay.
Thanks for coming down. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions for council?
Mayor, I agree you ought to move forward, too, with a public hearing. But I'd like to understand something in this distinction I'm hearing for the first time today. We've got districts, and then we've got character districts. And for Mr. Dowell to make the point about an organized effort that he has felt that he's needed to put together to represent some of the interest, and they may be, I don't know, maybe no more or less than the amenities that he shows on these pictures, I'm not so sure that's the kind of decision that the council wants to get into either. What kind of fixtures, what kind of signage, I think that should be left up to the governance of the Bid Board. But I like to understand, as we go forward, is there the flexibility with the character districts, if that's what they're going to be called, interest in different design or amenities such as he puts forward? The allowance for that. I heard Ava talk about flexibility. I heard A.J. talk about flexibility. Again, is there going to be the flexibility in this governance board for that kind of input? And understand that if that part of the district, character district, just feels so strongly about certain amenities looking certain ways, is there room for that? Or are we just talking about a uniformity throughout this bid district that we're either going to have or we're not going to have?
If I can answer that, Mr. Bowman. What, we're mixing and matching a couple of issues here today. But one of the issues with the light poles and the traffic signals and the street furniture is actually out of Project 180. Project 180, we had a master plan to bring some uniformity to certain parts of downtown. That program was taken to the Downtown Design Review Committee for approval because that's what they do. They approved that concept. Mr. Dowell is appealing that determination, particularly for his particular area, and that is going to the Board of Adjustment now. And the hearing on that is Thursday. So, those issues that are in those pictures are really now out of the hands of the city or the downtown, the OKC with the bid. But it's now in a quasi-adjudicial process, being brought forth through the DDRC and on now, based upon Mr. Dowell's appeal, to the Board of Adjustment.
So, if he would have to prevail, he or his property owners he represents would prevail to Board of Adjustment, then this would be a moot issue as far as the design board as a whole?
As far as the design components of the lights and the... As far as the design components of the lights and the streetlights and the traffic, yeah, street furniture.
And Sam, I think it's important to note also that with this overlap of 180 in the district, not all of the character districts are within Project 180. So there is more flexibility in a number of those than there might be in the ones that would also fall into Project 180.
Project 180 only covers a portion of the bid.
So that means that outside Project 180, and maybe separate from Mr. Dowell's concern, there well can be some flexibility in the design and looks of street furniture, lighting, and other-
And we've worked clearly with the districts in the past, automobiles and all, with the type of lighting that they have, the type of amenities that are there in Bricktown and other sub-districts. And the answer to that is yes.
All right. Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Consent docket passed unanimously. On the concurrence docket, there is just one item. Comments or questions on item 7A? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8, these are items that require a separate vote. Police Chief Bill City will be coming in, I think, to present this first issue, which is an ordinance that is going to be introduced today.
The purpose of this amendment to the ordinance is to conform with state statute. Basically, right now, we release about four different, to four different entities on traffic reports that are taken. And over the years, the state has increased those numbers to about 11 different entities. And all we're doing is adding those to our current ordinance to be in line with state statute.
Okay. Would you consider this housekeeping, chief?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just a minor question. Would a representative of a company or organization that's self-insured be able to get this information?
That's self-insured?
Yes. Like, for instance, City is self-insured, O G D is self-insured, I'm sure there's a-
I would say that it would fall within that category, yes.
They could be considered an insurer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Cast your votes on item 8A. Passed unanimously. Item 8B is a revocable permit to hold the 2010 Devon Energy Corporation Holiday Boat Parade and Festival. Is there anyone here representing this event today? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C is our collective bargaining agreement with Ask Me. Any comments or questions from council? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D, I understand we do need executive session?
Actually, Mayor, we don't need executive session. We do not need it this morning. But I do want to announce that the F O P did pass their contract over the weekend with a final count of 415, four, and 90 against. And so that will go before the city council next Tuesday.
All right. Yeah, we do need to move. To strike it? Okay. Item 8D is struck. Move to item 8E. Claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8E?
I'm not yet.
How about a second? All right, cast your votes. Those claims are denied. We move on to item 9. These are claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under either of these items?
Move.
All right, cast your votes on item 9. It passed unanimously. That moves us to items from council. Pat, you want to get us started this morning?
I think I am.
All right, skip. Meg? Ryan? Pete? Larry?
I'd just like to reemphasize the fact that there was groundbreaking yesterday afternoon at Buchanan Elementary School out in the Corbin Park and Musgrave-Pennington area, and very well received. The kids had a great time, and that project is moving forward and is scheduled to be completed in February of 2012. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Mars and I had the opportunity to participate in, or be part of, a transportation gathering yesterday at the Secretary of Transportation office, Gary Ridley. Ag cog was represented. Gary and I from Oklahoma City, a host of folks from D O T, and Dave Herbert, former senator from Midwest City, with his transportation interests, was present. Convened by Bob Kemper. Bob Kemper, some of you know, all of you have heard from over the course of your time on city councils, a transportation consultant, working with high-speed rail and commuter rail systems throughout the state. He's the one to convene this group. And the purpose of the gathering was to look at an Oklahoma City commuter rail demonstration The idea is to take some downtime of Amtrak in March, middle of March, and with Amtrak's encouragement, three passenger trains would be set here at the Santa Fe Station on the west side of the platform. Again, with Amtrak's encouragement, be their cars made available for three days. First day, as I understand, would be largely exhibit day, bringing a lot of public in, dignitaries in, to just view the operation. And then the intent is to try to take one day and run commuter lines back and forth to Edmund from the Santa Fe Station, and then the next day, run them back and forth to Norman for the general public and some space, I'm sure, for dignitaries, to make as much of a PR benefit as possible. The whole idea being to begin to educate and make the general public aware of the opportunities for commuter service. The big stickler with everybody's understanding yesterday is the railroad itself, B N S F. Are they going to really lock into this and buy into this? The group has their tacit approval, but those present yesterday said it really needs to be pinned down in writing before moving forward. And I think it was Dave Herbert said that he had, talking with the present governor and the newly-elected governor, with their agreement to send a letter to B N S F to get it in writing, to confirm their approval of this demonstration project. It would, and we were asked, Gary and I were asked about Oklahoma City's participation and said certainly would think Oklahoma City would want to participate, but certainly with the participation of the Edmonds and Normans as well. If we're going to move ahead even with a demonstration project with regard to commuter rail, and we're talking about regional system that has to have the buy-in of surrounding communities, then no better place to start than with this demonstration project, with at least the buy-in of our neighbors to the north and south. So our participation would certainly be, I would think, contingent on the sister cities to the north and south. There's going to be operating costs, although the trains are going to be made available, and it would be slated as a charter route by Amtrak. So it'd be their service, their liability, their insurance covering it. But there would be operating costs for those three days, and the preliminary budget is something around $60,000 bucks would have to be generated to cover that demonstration. So it's just, it's just a matter of information at this point. It's an ambitious and fast-track agenda to try to do it mid-March. It just happens. I think, Gary, that those one, when the trains were available and could be brought to Oklahoma City at that time period. Gary?
Well, just a couple of points that's important to note, I think. These are cars that are currently being put out of service to be refurbished, to put a service in Denton, Texas in. And they are the type of cars that would be a commuter rail service if, when, if and when we get one here. So I think the ability to see what it would look like and how it would operate is a key part of this. Department of Transportation sees this as an opportunity to utilize the Santa Fe Station to put on an exhibit for all types of transportation issues, C and G issues, and bus rapid transit, all the things that we want to talk about or that have been talked about in a regional transportation system. It would be a good way to put on display down there for people to see what those systems look like and see what Department of Transportation on a state level in the cities and so forth are looking at. But I think one of the most important parts was that everybody in the room understood that not only this demonstration, but a transit solution has to be a regional concept. It has to have buy-in from all the communities that would be serviced by it, and they were all very encouraging in their recognition of that, and that if this should go forward, as Sam said, the railroad itself and Amtrak are the hurdles right now that have to be breached. When those approvals come online, then the issues, the discussion on how we fund this short-term demonstration project will come online. But when we do that, it has to be on a regional level. And so far, the indications are that the communities are supportive of that. So I think it's a good way to give those people that have said, you know, I've heard about this commuter rail, but I don't know what they're talking about, and I think it'd be a good way on a two- or three-day demonstration to show what that is and how it could be utilized.
Yeah. It's an exciting idea. I wish it were more than just three days, but I also understand just getting those three days may be more than we can handle. But I'd encourage those who are working on it to keep working on it. City manager reports?
We had Russell Claus here this morning to talk to us a little bit about an update, I guess it's a semi-annual update, on our neighborhood stabilization program.
Morning, Mayor and council. Pleasure to be here this morning. This is our third update, I believe, of the neighborhood stabilization program. I'm just going to recap a little bit in terms of what the program purpose is. My clicker's not working. You can see this in the handout, but the program was originally authorized in July of 2008, and it was in response to the rapidly emerging foreclosure crisis at that time. We negotiated with the Department of Commerce, who was the pass-through agency for the majority of the funds that we received, and we were able to launch our program in March of 2009. It had three primary objectives: to redevelop foreclosed and vacant property, to reverse as much as we could the abandonment of blight that was being caused by the foreclosure crisis, and to provide housing opportunities and services to those people either affected by foreclosure or otherwise affected by housing issues and homelessness. A very tight timeline on this program. We had 18 months to commit the funds and 48 months to expend the funds. We received a total of just over $13 million in four different allocations, the most recent earlier this year of about $666,000 of repurposed funds. Funds that were allocated elsewhere in the state were not able to be spent by the allocatee. Those were repurposed to us because we've done such an outstanding job of being able to expend the funds that we've received so far. Our performance measures in the short term, we set out to ensure that all the funds would be obligated by September of this year. We were required by the authorizing legislation to allocate at least 25% of those funds to very low-income families, those families at or below 50% of median household income. We attempted to target that activity as much as we can in concentrated areas. That proved a little difficult, and we had to sort of, we had to expand the original area that we were trying to target, but that has proved to be about the right size for what we were able to accomplish in terms of meeting the supply of foreclosed properties. Obviously, we want to remain in compliance. We were able, this legislation was a little different than a lot of other legislation that is focused at lower and medium income. They allowed us to be able to target households at 120% of median income, and that's different from anything that we've dealt with before. In the long term, we want to have all the funds spent. Clearly, by March 2013, we're going to reinvest the proceeds as much as we can. Our intent is to recycle as much of these funds as possible, so to get them spent, the quicker that we get them spent, the quicker that we can recycle those proceeds and be able to put more houses back on the market. Can you move on to the next one, Steve?
Will they have to follow the same guidelines?
Yes. We'll be bound by the same guidelines through the length of the program. We have met the deadline, the September deadline. We had all the funds obligated. I'm not sure how other recipients of funds fared in the state, but we received more funds than anybody else in the state. We were aggressive about pursuing those funds, and we have been able to allocate all the funds. Matt Gabelson, who has led this charge, has done an outstanding job, as has everybody else in the Community Development Division, and our partners in this program, Neighborhood Housing Services, have also worked together in an excellent partnership to obligate $13.5 million in such a short period of time, with the constraints provided by the legislation is truly a very significant accomplishment. We had a target of 25% of low-income households. We've actually been able to meet 32%. And our compliance with all requirements of the program has been confirmed now by H U D, by the State Department of Commerce, and most recently, the Officer of the Inspector General, who spent some time camped in our office. This is a sort of brief summary of how the funds were allocated. A little over half, $7.4 million, was dedicated towards single-family acquisition and rehabilitation. And then the majority of the rest of the funds were allocated towards the development of the West Town campus, which includes the Housing Resource Center and the Day Shelter. Originally, we only had the funds for the Resource Center. With those additional funds we were able to receive from the competitive program that the Department of Commerce operated, we were able to also include the Day Shelter, thus fulfilling a significant need in our ability to be able to address homelessness in the city. So far, in terms of single families, we've evaluated 260 properties. That takes a lot of time and effort, and a housing rehab unit headed by Bob Daley has done an excellent job of being able to go out and look at all of those properties. We ended up making offers on just over half of those properties that we evaluated and then purchased just over half of the properties that we made offers on. We have two properties that we have now completed and sold, and we have about 50 that are currently under rehabilitation. So our original intent in meeting that September deadline was to make sure that we got the houses acquired, the money obligated. Now we're in the second phase. Our effort is, through Neighborhood Housing Services, is going to be ensure that we rehabilitate those houses and get them back on the market as soon as possible. These are a couple of examples of some of the properties that we've been able to acquire and rehabilitate. And the next map, the map on the next slide will illustrate the distribution of those properties. You can see they're fairly evenly distributed south, near southwest, near northwest, near northeast, and in the Oak Cliff neighborhood in the southeast corner. Next steps with this, we have 42 properties that we hope to redevelop by March of next year. Expect to have 20 properties sold by July. Those proceeds, as I mentioned, will be reinvested back into the program, so we'll be acquiring additional properties and sending those for rehabilitation as well. There is a third round of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. There has been money allocated to the state. Those funds have not been dispersed yet, so we're not sure what our allocation may be out of that. We hope that our success so far with this program is going to put us in good stead for a significant amount of those funds. And there are also additional funds that were recaptured that were not spent within the state. Also hoping to get some of those funds as well. The West Town facility is currently under construction. I don't know if anybody's driven up Virginia lately, but they're making pretty good progress there. They have the roof on, they have the steel structure up, and they're now currently working on the internal walls. That facility is going to provide a service that has been missing in this community and is, that will be an important tool in our ability to be addressed the homelessness issue and whether that's- issue and whether that's caused by foreclosure or not. That center, which the Homeless Alliance is currently seeking tenants for, they had an R F P out a couple of months ago. They've received responses to that. And I know that Dan Strawn is actively out negotiating with those responses as well as additional tenants that we think are appropriate fit for that center. So those tenants, we hope, will be some of the state service agencies that support people who are struggling with homelessness. We will be able to make housing referrals and placement out of that, out of that center, financial counseling, and then even referrals for just the small things that we might take for granted, like dental services and mental health and substance abuse. Those are things that, these people don't have easy access to, and that's, and often get in the way of them being able to sort of create a stable housing environment. I do want to point out that the Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds will not be used to pay for the operations of that facility. The Homeless Alliance is working on assembling the funds to be able to ensure the long-term operation of those facilities. As I mentioned before, I mean, the West Town Center is about 60% complete at this point in time. They intend to open the facility in February, or complete the facility in February with the grand opening in March. And I know many of you at the groundbreaking there, I think last winter on a very cold day, so hopefully it'll be a little warmer when they open it. The Day Shelter bids were opened in September. The award was, contract was awarded in October. We anticipate construction beginning in January and hope that construction will be completed by early summer of next year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on that. Larry?
Yeah, Russell, I hate to be a picker, but if you go back to your West Town progress slide, I think your date's there. Should that be March, February 2011, and March 2011?
I think the next one.
Yes, and sure.
We have 10? Yes, I think you're correct.
Russell, on the Day Shelter, the $2 million has been allocated to Day Shelter. A couple of weeks ago, at the Day Shelter Board meeting, we learned that the Department of Commerce had another $150,000, and your department has helped make application for that so that the Day Shelter doesn't have to cut any corners on its...
Debbie Martin made me aware of that, $150,000 this morning. And I'm not sure, but I believe that is probably the proportional allocation out of that last disbursement to us, the $666,000. That is, I'll have to ask Matt Gabelson about that, but that's my belief that that's where those funds are coming from.
So they are coming?
That I'm not sure about.
All right. He'll let us know.
I wasn't part of that conversation, so...
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah. Russell, did I hear you? I had a question, then I thought maybe you answered it, but I just need to be sure. In the process, you talked about we had already used the money that had been allocated to us in the rehab section of this?
We have obligated all the funds.
Obligated all?
We have not spent all the funds.
Is it possible that if other communities in the state did not use their money, that we could apply for some of that? Is that possible? I thought you said...
Yes. There is a discussion at Department of Commerce now about some funds that the federal government has allowed the state to reapportion. We're not sure how much that money is or when that decision is going to be made. They are considering it in concert with the $5 million that has been allocated to the state as part of the third round of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. So it's quite conceivable we could get, we would hope, another couple of million dollars out of this, which is going to be able to put more homes back into service.
The houses that I've seen that are in my area are difference-maker kind of houses. I mean, the way that the rehabs have gone, you had a picture of two of them in the thing, and it, I recognize the difficulty in getting them pretty close together, just because that's just difficult. But the impact of putting more than one in an area, I think, is, has a synergy that is worth the extra effort to try to do that.
And we have tried to do that as much as possible. And you can see that there was some reasonable clustering.
No, I appreciate that.
I really think that does have a huge impact, because we all know that, you know, more properties that go vacant, go dark on a street really has a huge negative effect.
Well, I've seen a few that have been finished, and to have another one close would just really make a difference in some of these neighborhoods. Just having one is a good start, but getting one close together is... I'm trying to say it's worth the effort. I know it's hard to do, but it's worth the effort to do it.
Thank you.
This is a great project. And it, how it indirectly helps the Oklahoma City Public School System, too. You know, continues to raise property values in the district, continues to raise their capacity for funding, and we all know that that is a necessary ingredient of trying to turn that school system around, so...
Correct.
These houses that rehabilitated being marketed, what's the process for doing that?
Neighborhood Housing Services rehabilitates them and then puts them out on the market for sale.
Oh, we're not using independent private realtors to do it?
No.
Is it possible to do that?
I believe it's possible. I don't think that N H S at this point in time has considered that necessary, but as we put more of these, as we finish more of these houses, they may look to that as an option. I haven't talked to them about that.
Okay. Comments or questions, Meg?
I do just have a quick comment. I think it's important that we not minimize the incredible job that they've done in record-keeping. And I mean, to be able to get a clean audit and have HUD bless the work we've done is really important, and I just wanted to compliment the staff. I know you've worked really hard.
I appreciate that. It's kind of like one of the invisible efforts that we engage in, but Steve attests to the fact that, you know, we've had auditors in the office almost 10 months of the year. So it's well documented.
Russell, I would encourage and would like to see the possibility of those funds from other cities that, you know, may not have used the funds, to see if the possibility of us acquiring those funds. Because, you know, we realize that housing is probably one of the number-one challenges in most cities today. And you see the paper this morning, the Section 8 of the Oklahoma Housing Authority has basically cut off, you know, their waiting line for people, and that there's a number of people that are standing in line wanting and needing, and children needing a place to reside in a shelter over their head. So I would applaud the effort to see if there's any other funds that's out there that have not been utilized by other cities or government agencies. And so, and again, I'll applaud you all, and I concur with Pete, that the clustering of some of these houses has really made a difference in some neighborhoods as opposed to going in and, you know, putting one rehab in an area that's not going to really change the whole landscape as far as, you know, upgrading the community. And if the possibility of really increasing property values in areas, I think really makes the main difference in reference to this project. And I know it's not, you know, designed to be, you know, total redevelopment in areas, but it does redevelop the areas. So I thank you and your staff for your...
I certainly concur with that approach, and we do strive as much as we can to concentrate, but we are limited by the fact that it's what houses are on the market.
All right, any more questions for us on this? Okay, thanks, Russell.
Thank you.
Anything else on your city manager reports?
No, sir.
An empty chamber. I don't suppose there's a citizen to be heard. Everybody ready to adjourn? All right, we adjourn. Thanks.